I'm calling the meeting's order. Can you get a roll call, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Gillum.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Here.
Mr. Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Dacus.
Here.
Ms. Fitchew.
Here.
Mr. Beecham. Ms. Sanders.
All right, we've got six members present, Mr. Beecham is officially, you want to talk about that a second, I guess.
I can, I think.
Yeah.
Charles. Did they send you a letter?
No.
Uh, I received an email from, uh, Mr. Beecham that he resigned effective August fifth. So, uh.
That's mine.
From what I understand, uh, from what I understand, uh, there will be, I think they're going petition to have his seat put on the, uh, November.
About the next general election is November, so, I mean, county commission could point if they wanted to between now and, but I don't know, I don't know that's staying yet. The next scheduled meeting of the county commission is October, unless they call on.
So that, that's the, uh, so he, he, he's officially resigned his position as school board member.
All right, um, item number three, open public comment, there was enough sign-ins, so we'll go to item number four, which is approval of the minutes from the work session on July fourteenth, and the regular session July fourteenth, and you've had those sent to you in your board packets, uh, is there any objections or corrections to those minutes? All right, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Miss Detiu.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lamb, uh, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right, yes as have it, uh, item number five is approval of the consent agenda. Uh, Mr. Director, do you want?
These are all fundraiser requests from, uh, different schools, there were some with asterisks beside it that were added after you received your packet. Some of these are, we, we've, uh, we replaced, we hired a new cross-country coach at the high school, middle school, and he's trying to get caught up, but if I'll answer any questions about these, all of these, uh, were approved by me, all these fundraisers, and all of them are things that we have done in the past. So there's, I, I couldn't see anything that we haven't done in the past, and hopefully this will be it on the fundraisers. On the field trips, these are annual trips to, uh, overnight trips for national conventions for HOSA, and then I know HOSA Antioch, they go to camp, uh, Camp Antioch for a couple of days in October, and I approved those also. I'll answer any questions if you have.
Mike, should be field trips for HOSA for Dallas and Knoxville, it says twenty-two, should that be twenty-three?
Should be twenty-three, I think somebody put the, yeah, because that, they're going Dallas, HOSA National Convention is twenty-three, I'm sorry, we'll correct that.
Uh, just for my sure.
Yep, that one is also, I should have called that when I signed it, sorry folks. But yes, those would be twenty, twenty-three, and we'll correct it on the, uh.
All right, any other questions or? Can I get a motion?
Big motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second by Ms. Sanders, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Yes as have it, all right, uh, item number six is discussion of approval of ESER three-point-oh public plans.
Uh, you, in your package, you received the, the, uh, then the guidance, uh, and then what is in for generalities and what is in the ESER three plan. Dr. Duncan, Ben Duncan, our, our ESER coordinator, uh, is here tonight, if you have any questions or if there's anything, Dr. Duncan, you think that we, you know, highlights.
This, uh, you know, we do this every six months, so we did it past in February, and this shows how many, uh, the remaining funds for both ESER two and ESER three going into this fiscal year. And overview of how it's allocated.
On the, on the second page, there is a, a breakdown of the, of the money that we, we've already expended all the ESER one money, uh, there are eight hundred and eight thousand dollars approximately left in ESER two, which, uh, a big chunk of that's going to go to, um, employee bonuses. Five percent, which has not been approved by the state yet, but that's, that's where we're planning on using that. So we have a total between ESER two and ESER three of, oh, look, a hair over, uh, four million dollars to expend by the end of twenty twenty-four.
All right, are there any questions about the ESER three-point-oh public plans? I know I like seeing things like, you know, stuff, we talked about the mental health and some things like that, uh, interventionalists, I think that that's a really good idea, uh, for money to go toward that. Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Mr. Gillum. Second by Ms. Sanders, can I get a roll call on that?
Ms. Fitchew.
Yes.
Ms. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Gillum.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Uh, item number seven is discussion of approval of policy four-point-four, G O three, library materials.
This, this policy has, we've had, adopted a new policy at the last, uh, school board meeting, and when we sent the policy and we took this policy straight from T S B A, when we sent it in to be placed into the, uh, the database, we received feedback from T S B A that, uh, with new guidance, they had changed the guidance on the sample policy between the time that we read it and we adopted it. And in your packet, it, there is a, uh, there's a new policy with the changes that we needed to make on that. Uh, it's just some wordage as far as, uh, who would be responsible for, uh, development of library materials, which is a supervising instruction, which that would be Dr. Duncan, and, uh, and who's responsible for, for, uh, periodically reviewing the library collection, which is all, can all be accessed on the line, it's all cataloged. Uh, and it goes through the, the, if there is a complaint by employee, student, parent regarding the process that would be used. And so basically what we're doing is coming in, coming back and revising it again, uh, to meet with what T S B A requi-, uh, recommends for us to do. Now can I answer any questions if you have any?
We've been seeing across the country, different places where there's been inappropriate things in libraries, and this is to try to address this, and I think this is super important that we pass this. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Fitchew.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lamb. Uh, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes, those opposed, no? Yes as have it. All right, item number eight is a discussion of approval of three-point-oh.
If you all recall, last board meeting, we had a work session where, uh, Mr. Randy Mollman, uh, presented proposal that we've been working on with them for a while, uh, in terms of, uh, upgrading a number of things within our, our school system, infrastructure-wise, uh, and, uh, we had, it was agreed to put it on the agenda for further discussion, and then, uh, either to approve or deny the proposal. Uh, you have a one pager on your, on your desk that kind, it's the same thing we went over last time, but this is, uh, just a one-page summary of the, of the process, and then, uh, all that's left to do is for board approval, and then we will sign, uh, the, uh, the letter of intent to go forward with the project. I can't answer specific questions about the proposal, but Mr. Mr. Mollman is here, uh, he can, if there's anything that anybody has to, that would like to ask. If you ask my opinion, if we should do this, I, I recommend it, because I think that with the amount of improvements that we are seeing that we need to have done, some of these projects are just too big for us to do it in-house, and I think having a, a company to help us with it, especially when it would be of no cost to us if they meet, when we meet what we, what the agreement says we would.
I know I talked to Jacob Tippett today, and he has spoke to other county maintenance directors that have already, are already doing his program, and, and he said they one-hundred percent would do it again, so, he said it's something that's, it's kind of a no-brainer. And, uh, even he said with, with the recommendations and the things they've been doing, like you said, Mike, it's something they cannot do. It's not something to worry about like second, but what's going to happen in five years for our third-year at the middle school starts going bad, and, and, you know, North Stewart starts, you know, deteriorating even more, I mean, there's a lot of things that, that we won't be able to handle, and it's probably going to cost us more money in the long run, so.
Good point.
I mean, I think correct from wrong on this, no new money, once we sign the contract and go through it, we don't pay nothing. Was that accurate?
Is that wrong? Okay.
That's correct.
But if we have the audit done and then we decide not to.
Then we pay, yeah.
Then we have to pay.
Once we go through with the contract, we're good.
Right.
We don't pay nothing.
Right.
Charles said he would go with the contract.
I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
It's a U.S. Department of Energy, so I'm sure it's a pretty standard, better contract, but, and unfortunately, a lot of those at that level, you're not going to negotiate too much out of them anyway, so.
Sure.
It's pretty much, you just understand your dignity as a, as a contractor, if you're comfortable with doing what's in there, and that's pretty much what you want.
This will be the same contract that you use in the, in the other schools, is that correct?
We're, we're not to the point of a contract yet, all that will be reviewed at that time. This is just a letter of commitment to proceed with the investment rate on it.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have anything else?
Bobby, Mike, whoever, like, yeah, is it, is it kind of usual that we don't let the term look at nothing before we approve anything? The, is that what it says?
I don't know.
I think he said there was no contract.
There's no contract.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a letter.
But we're, we're approving for, anything, is that right, is that normal?
We have a, a letter of intent, uh, to proceed, uh, and, and basically what this letter of intent says is that we're going to authorize train to, to do an investment grade audit of our school facilities.
I think it's essentially what we, this, or what the board was presenting.
Exactly what it is.
I think when they presented last meeting, that's essentially what that letter is saying, we're going to go through with what they presented and.
Yes.
See where the audit lies, and if you want to go forward, you can, if you don't, you're going to pay for the audit, am I correct, sir?
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
But the audit will reveal what that contract will probably have in it.
Exactly.
Requirements from training, requirements from the school.
But if we go through, what this, uh, here says is, Kelly, what you said, we got zero expenses, right?
Unless we decide not to go with it, and then we pay for it.
But now the audit is ninety thousand dollars.
Let them ride.
The other, if those schools are, and I'm sure that it's not going to be something that we're not going to want to go forward with, and if it's going to benefit our school and save us money in the long run, I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah.
And no money up front.
No money up front, that's, that's a huge plus.
Exactly, no money.
Does anybody else, anybody else have anything?
The brand, I mean, the brands, stands a lot.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second. Second by Mr. Dacus, do a roll call on that.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Dacus?
Yes.
Ms. Fitchew?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Uh, item number nine is discussion of approval of contract between the State County Board of Education and Education Resource Management Consortium Health, Health Committee.
This is a, this is something that's not going to cost us any money, or, this is a, uh, grant that we applied for and got to, uh, have an independent company, uh, do analysis of how we spend the ESER money, the federal money we're receiving. They go through before, and we're going to have a ton of monitoring on this as the time goes by, uh, and at the end, we're going to have a big time, they're going, they're going to be going through everything with the fine people column, but, but the state had grants that we could use, and it's especially important for small districts who may not have the, uh, people to do this, where we hire this company to, uh, go through all of our spending, uh, expenditures and so forth, and make sure that we are in compliance. So it's a pre-audit, uh, analysis, is that, is that basically, Dr. Duncan, how you would describe it?
Yes, sir, and make sure that we follow the Edgar guidelines of spending for federal dollars, if we, when we do the capital projects and we bid out a federal job, prevailing wage and all that good stuff.
Charles has already, you've seen this contract.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. It looked pretty standard, uh, especially grant administration is kind of.
And the company came recommended from, uh, I talked to a bunch of West Tennessee federal programs directors, and this is who a lot of them are going with, so.
Which is huge in grants, because if you mess with the administration, you're going to pay back.
You got to turn it back, then, if you've already spent it, you got to come up with money to pay it back, because you don't.
Probably the most important part of a grant is administrative funding.
All right, is there any discussion on that? Can I get a motion? Motion by Ms. Sanders. Second, second by Mr. Dacus. Uh, can I get a roll call on this?
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Dacus?
Yes.
Ms. Fitchew?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
All right, uh, item number ten is the approval of the win for what, budget amendment.
In your packet, there was, uh, there were a few budget amendments that Mr. Winn, uh, requested that we place on the agenda. At the top, other contracted services, uh, this is special ed, uh, we are, and then at the bottom there, other contracted services, that's also going into special ed, this is to put our line items where they, uh, where we spent the last two years. So we're just moving money, uh, at, uh, other contracted services, including into, uh, those two areas in special education to cover costs. On the other part, the B E P two-hundred-eighty-three thousand, that was, uh, the increase that we got from the state for salaries and benefits, and all that money is being, we're just moving it from, we, we receive the money, now we're putting it into the, the line items where we can spend it, it's going into teachers' salaries, and then there are part of this also, where it says bus drivers, uh, we have put aside twenty-five thousand dollars to pay for, uh, attendance bonuses for our bus drivers this year, so there'll be five hundred dollars at first semester and five hundred dollars second semester, and to receive that bonus, the drivers will have to be at perfect attendance. And those are the budget amendments.
Any questions? Anybody have any questions? Anybody have a? Motion to approve?
My one.
Motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gillum, can I get a roll call on this?
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Dacus?
Yes.
Ms. Fitchew?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
That passes, uh, item number eleven is approval of special education budget.
Hi, Duncan, can you help me with that?
Yeah, this is, uh, Ms. Robbins', uh, A R P money from last year, uh, this is just her carryover money that she did not spend from F Y twenty-two, she was carrying it over to F Y twenty-three, um, you know, you have I D E A money, and you have her I D E A preschool money. She spends on teachers, assistance is pretty much, uh, the main lines covered there.
So we're just adding this to the F Y twenty-three budget?
Yes, it would be added to her, yeah, overall one forty-one budget.
Any questions about this? Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Detiu. Second by Ms. Sanders, can I get a roll call?
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Dacus?
Yes.
Ms. Fitchew?
Yes.
All right, that passes, uh, item number twelve is the director's report.
All right, I've got just a few things to report this month, uh, as you all know, we started school this week, and I think we're off to a good start. Uh, we're really, uh, trying to work out all the kinks, uh, especially in the averages on buses, uh, with kids. We've got new drivers and some new, uh, some new bus routes, but, uh, just being in the schools every day this week, uh, I've seen, uh, teachers are happy to be back, kids seem to be excited to be back, and I'll just tell you, to me personally, uh, it feels as normal as it has in a long time being back in school, uh, and our goal is to keep it that way. Uh, we're really emphasizing attendance this year, uh, Ms. Paragon has hit the ground running, uh, to encourage and whatever we have to do to get everybody in school, uh, last year we had a, uh, uh, which was disappointing for me, for all of us, uh, like, over thirty percent chronic absenteeism, which means we had thirty percent of our children miss eighteen or more days of school last year. And so we're really going to emphasize and, and, and try to make sure that we have our, our children in school, because that's the most important part. We're also talking to our teachers about that too, how important is it, it is for them to be there every day, uh, that they can be. We, I know a hot topic or, or a concern of a lot of people is school safety, uh, we have, our S R Os have trained countless hours this summer, uh, to prepare for anything that could arise, uh, threat assessments have been done at each school, and those areas that we found to be weak, we are strengthening, I won't get into specifics of what our weaknesses are, but we are, they are being addressed. Uh, all of our, most of all of our bus drivers and our, I know one school, Dover Elementary, have gone through, uh, you remember last meeting, we had a gentleman here to, with the Stock of Bleed program, we had one old faculty go through it, and all of our bus drivers have gone through it, so, God forbid anything happens, we're, we, we believe that we're, we're getting everybody trained up on how to limit damage. Uh, I want to thank the Sheriff's Department and, uh, Sheriff Gray for, uh, increased presence in our schools, uh, in the mornings especially. Uh, uh, if you went by any of our schools this week in the mornings, and you'll see it tomorrow, that not only do we have our S R Os there, but there's, uh, there's been a sheriff's deputy there every school too, which, and we have them there during high-traffic times, the parents are dropping people off, kids off and so forth, uh, I also like to report this in that area too, uh, that all of our S R Os are now equipped with, uh, breakdown, I, I don't know how, they, what do you call those in your backpack you carry?
Portable stock ARs.
Right, they have portable stock AR rifles that are, that they don't, they're not long rifles, so they're not scaring everybody, but they fit in a backpack, so, uh, we're now equipped to, to combat, you know, if somebody comes in with a high-powered rifle, our guys have the same thing, and they've been training hard on using those, and so, uh, as you all know, there's no, there's no foolproof plan, but I think that we have, uh, we beefed up everything in, in the schools to make sure that our kids and our students, teachers are safe. I would like to say that if you're driving, uh, please obey the laws in the, in the, uh, school zones. We had a couple of issues with people, uh, with that, and then on some good notes, uh, you know, our, our fall sports seasons have all kicked off, uh, you know, we've got the first home football game next week, and our fans been working hard on, uh, their, getting ready for their halftime show and all the competitions coming up, so it's just, uh, it's exciting time for our kids and our teachers and coaches and so forth, and so, uh, we're looking forward to a really good school year. That's all I've got, Shannon.
Mike, where are we on bus drivers? Are we okay?
Today, I talked to him, we're, we're, we're four short, we're being covered, all the routes are being covered, we haven't had to cancel any routes. And we are, I met with some bus drivers last week, and, uh, we're working on studying how we can recruit more, retain more, pay more, uh, but, the problem is, and we're seeing it, and again, I don't want to compare us to everybody else, but what we're seeing everywhere in the state, all the incentives in the world, you still got to have people that want to do it, and everybody's having a hard time finding enough drivers, uh, I know in, uh, Montgomery County, some of their drivers are running two and three routes in a day. We can't do that in Stewart County, the way we're spread out, it would be impossible, uh, but our drivers are doing a, a great job, and I can promise you that we're going to come up with something to try to retain and recruit more.
You said four short, but they're covered.
That's what he told me this afternoon, was four.
What does it look like if you have to cancel or, what does that mean, you cancel, and those kids just do not.
They have to, their parents would have to get them here.
Wow.
And we did that, I think we had to do it a couple of times last year, we do our best to figure out how to get them here, uh, you know, I know if he's, if he were to start canceling routes, he would cancel the ones that are, he would start with the one in Dover, because we could, we could actually run two in, in the Dover area, but, uh, besides that, it'd just be up to the parents to get them to school, and, you know, what's lost on a lot of people is, school systems don't have to provide transportation, uh, you know, city school systems, a lot of them don't. But we, we do, and we want to continue to do that, and we want them all here, uh, but, uh, hopefully we won't have to cancel any routes.
This, this is Bobby, uh, can we put that on the agenda for next month to discuss where we are with bus drivers and what they've come up with on certain ways? And, and even allow some of the bus drivers to, to speak, because I know there's several that want to represent the board, um, on some sites from the bus, I, I'd just like to make sure that if possible, that's on the agenda for next month.
Yeah, we can do that.
Which that meeting will be on the, just so everybody knows. It'll be September eighth, September eighth, in the next board meeting. So we'll have, we'll have something, some ideas of what we can do, what it would cost, because with anything, you're going, if you, for example, if you gave benefits, uh, I think there's some que, you know, how much would that cost, well, it depends on the plan that you gave, and it would be probably close to a thousand dollars per employee, per insurance policy, our car would be. So, uh, we're going to do our best to find a solution to help them, I, I can promise you that. And we, we gave raises last year, uh, raised all, all across the board, uh, on their pay scale, uh, we're going to get a bonus this year, and, uh, we'll continue to search ways to, to make it attractive to, to get people. It's a thankless job, though, and I appreciate it, it was great, yep.
They had a big job.
Yes.
A big job. Sure, you can't get them here.
All right. Does anybody have anything else?
I was going to take a moment to, 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 that, uh, next case, and, and, and he was throwing up, uh, we fell on the playground, we were still, he worked in Holland, and it was just, there was hanging on, and she got it, and cried, and made sure that he got, who the nurse was, and who was hanging there. We had somebody calling, saying that you should absolutely.
Absolutely, the past, the past few weeks have been kind of tough on our school system, we also lost, uh, David Welker. Absolutely, the past, the past few weeks have been kind of tough, our school system, we also lost, uh, David Welker. Who's a long-time maintenance person, and I'm sorry I didn't bring this up before, I just, it's hard for me to talk about David, because David and I were friends from the time we were five years old, so. He was a great person, a great, uh, great employee, and then Ms. Nancy Jane, I never had the pleasure of having her as a teacher. She started at the high school after I had already moved on, but, uh, I did, I did have the honor of being administrator in the building with her, and there was nobody like her. And, uh, two big holes are in our system right now, so keep the families in prayers.
I told Ray the other night, she was a rock star, you know, wherever she went, everybody loved her, so.
And everybody had a story, and a good story, everybody had a Nancy Jane story.
I love it.
I was kind of her boss, I guess, but I never considered me, being her boss. Uh, I know one thing you didn't want to get her, against you. Uh, she wanted her, and I was always lucky enough to have her as one of my biggest supporters, and, uh, even after she retired, she would give me phone calls and sometimes give me advice whether I wanted it or not. And, uh, I've always appreciated that.
I read comments that students, former students had said about her, and it was, it was so heartfelt, because they said they would feel like they were a nobody, and by the time they were, left her class, they were somebody. And, and I just think, you know, she preached her funeral on Earth, because how many students she encouraged, that would maybe have not got that encouragement at home or from other friends. So I think she's awesome.
Personally though, my, my son, my oldest son said that, uh, had it not been for her and a couple of other English teachers, he never passed college English, so she was, uh, she, and had a big effect on him.
She did, she sure did. Thank you, Lena, for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else? Got a motion that we adjourn, by Ms. Sanders?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gillum, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes is had it, we adjourned.